Good evening. The League of Women Voters of Pocatello and the Idaho State Journal welcomes you to our 2025 Chubbuck School Board, City Council, and Mayoral Candidate Forum. This evening, we will have two moderators, Linda Engel, myself, from the League of Women Voters, and Ian Fennell, from Idaho State Journal. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that seeks to promote active participation of citizens in government. The Idaho State Journal's mission is to provide credible and compelling information and services to customers and to serve as a forum for community debate. All candidates in contested races have been invited to participate in this evening's forum. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Idaho and may not be used for any purpose without explicit written permission from the League. No part of a League-sponsored video production may be altered, used in advertising, or in any way to promote a candidate. The League will only allow the audio/video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety. All uses must be attributed to the League of Women Voters of Pocatello Candidate Forum on October 7, 2025, and must include a disclaimer that the views expressed do not reflect those of the League of Women Voters.
We will call on each candidate, and they will have one minute for their introduction. We will then rotate through the candidates, giving each person one and a half minutes to answer each question. Each candidate will have the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement after the questioning concludes at 6:50. The questions were submitted to the other State Journal and compiled by a committee consisting of League members and representatives from the Journal. To ensure the forum addresses as many concerns as possible in a fair and concise way, each individual submissions were consolidated into broader questions covering each topic. This helps maintain clarity while allowing us to cover the wider interest issues within the time constraints. We will not be taking questions from the audience this evening.
So, we will start with a one-minute introduction from the school district 25 board candidates, and we will start with Zone 1 with Megan Furness, and go ahead and begin with your introduction.
Hi, I'm Megan Furness. I'm currently serving as the Zone 1 Board Trustee. I have three kids that are in the school district and one more that will start in a few years. I've lived in Chubbuck for 11 years, and I've taught at high school and middle school levels before that. I've loved working at old levels. As a former public school teacher, I'm very passionate about education. When teaching, I got my master's degree in educational leadership, and while on the board, I worked towards more community members' participation on committees that are put together by the district for various things like the boundaries and textbook adoptions. Since I am from out of the district, I feel like I can add an unbiased perspective to decision-making around the district matters. I pushed for review of the cellphone policy, and I'm really happy with the reports that we've received from staff and students that see the benefits of the new policy. I hope to continue to support teacher development, because I know firsthand that teachers that are supported in learning are the best kinds of teachers for our community.
Thank you very much. All right, next is Kami Ellis, but she could not participate. She is also in Zone 1, so we will move on to School Board Zone 2, and that's Heather Clark.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is -- oh, gotta turn it on. Good evening. My name is Heather Clark, and I am running as a candidate for the school board in Zone 2. And I am, as the incumbent board member for the past four years and a community member for the past 20 years, I am personally invested in the success of our schools. I believe our schools are the heart of our community, and I am deeply committed to ensuring every child has the opportunity to thrive. My professional background has equipped me with the skills to read a budget, ask tough questions, and ensure the decisions we make are sound and fiscally responsible. These last four years, I have demonstrated collaboration with our administrators, teachers, and staff to set a clear student focus for our district. Right now, school vouchers are a key issue for our public schools, primarily because they divert public taxpayer money away from public schools and reduce funding. This can lead to budget cuts, school closures, larger class sizes, and fewer resources. If I'm re-elected, I will continue to proactively promote the district's "You Belong Here" campaign and further to build upon our successes. I'm ready to continue to put my experience at work and be a steady, sensible voice on the board. I ask you for our vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doug Johnson, who is also running for School Board Zone 2, is out of town and regrets that he cannot participate tonight, so we move on to School Board Zone 5, and we start with Deanna Judy.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Judy. I've had the privilege of serving on the school district board for the last three and a half years, the last two as the board chair. I hold a degree in elementary education and a master's degree in literacy. I'm the mother of seven children who have attended the school district -- who have attended school in this school district, so I bring both professional and personal experience to the work. As a trustee, I worked hard to ensure transparency, strengthen parent involvement, and make fiscally responsible decisions that prioritize students. Going forward, my priorities are to rebuild Thailand safely and efficiently, support student achievement through strong curriculum and parent involvement, and ensure that all the money that we spend as a district serves students and teachers. I'm committed to unity, transparency, and always keeping students at the center of every decision.
Thank you very much. All right, secondly, for School Board Zone 5, we have Dave Matson.
Well, I didn't come prepared to speak in a text form, so -- I don't know why. They told me to smile. Because did I look mean if I don't smile? So, I'll try. I did this for eight and a half years, five years ago, and I love it. I love working with the kids. I really liked expulsion years. That's when you got really near the parents, and frankly, the -- my opinion, the parents are the problem, and we have to help everyone. So, I wanted to do that again, and also, I hadn't brought up that one of our biggest jobs is to hire and fire superintendents. And I'm not talking about hiring or firing Doug, but when he leaves us, that's the toughest job we have. And what, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, this district had some poor leadership, and it got fixed, and I want to continue what I was doing right now, so there you go. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, so for this next section, we are going on to alternating questions for the school board candidates, and Mr. Fennell will begin.
All right. First question has to do with student safety and security, and we'll start with Heather. What are your plans to ensure student safety during potential ICE enforcement actions at schools and against active shooter threats?
Wow, loaded question. You know, I think the thing that I would defer to is our administration on that, mainly because we have policies and procedures in place, working with the district, Tanya -- I'm blanking on Tanya's last name.
Wilks.
Wilks. You know, we've got a very good system in place for emergency alerts and for making sure that the district either shuts down or has the safety measures in place. I know a big concern when we did the cellphone policy is parents were concerned about not having that immediate access to their student, but that was something that we looked at very seriously and that it actually would clog up the system by having phones ringing in a classroom or not having the proper means of communicating with the proper authorities when certain things like that, if, and unfortunately, if that were to happen. But I think I'm very confident in the policies and procedures that we have in place to ensure those measures are covered.
Thank you. Megan?
At the beginning of the question, you asked about ICE, right?
I can repeat the question. What are your plans to ensure student safety during potential ICE enforcement actions at schools and against active shooter threats?
Thank you. I believe that I received a email that I think everyone else in the district received explaining that they would note they would not be allowed to have any ICE at the school to take any of the students. That was a very firm stance, my understanding. Is it not right?
Close.
Okay, closer. Okay. So, I completely back that up. I agree that the school should be a safe place, that we should be promoting safety at the school, and no one should be worried for any reason if it's ICE or dangerous situations. And I think we've been very vigilant on getting cameras where there needs to be cameras. We, as a district, today have done scholarships. They have done grants to bring in different police officers to all the buildings so that there is access from the police at all times, and I've been able to see that when I go out to my kids' schools, that there are police there random times, all the time, and I feel like that is a big deterrent for any of those dangerous situations, and I fully back up those things that the district has done. And I agree with Heather that they have been very strategic about implementing plans to prevent anything.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you. I appreciated the letter that was sent out from the school district about the ICE operations to make sure that we are following protocols and rules and laws to as much perfection as we can, and I fully support that, and would love to be sure that the children don't need to worry about things like that. Those are things that they shouldn't have to worry about when they're in school. As far as officers in every building, a couple of years ago, I really voiced my desire to have more, an officer in every building, and I know we don't have the funds for that, but we did get more, and I was really happy about that. And I was so impressed when we had a forum on safety because of our concerns, when the police officers would tell us that they would, on their route, they would stop at whatever school they were near, and they would just be there, you know, walk through the hall so that people could see there's a, you know, a patrol car in front of the building. The kids could get used to having a police officer there, and it would help the kids to feel good, but also to help everybody feel that presence. During the cellphone, does this mean I have -- I'm sorry, how much, what does that --
It's 15 seconds.
Okay. Sorry. During our cellphone deliberations, my priority for me was that parents should be able to get ahold of their child during an emergency.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, well, I haven't -- oh, I'm sorry. I have been around the school district for a few years, and so I don't know the regulations that are already known that are going on, but I'm sure they're perfect from what we have today, and I'm gonna get there. Hopefully, if I get there, I'll see. I'll see what it is, but I remember 20, 25 years ago, Pocatello High School had 27 doors to enter that place, and they were all open. We've come a long way. We really have, so it's just something to learn when you get there. So, I'm smiling. Thanks.
Okay, our second, our second question, we will begin with Megan, and it is concerning special education and disability services. How will you ensure that disability accommodations and services are preserved and adequately funded in the face of potential government cuts?
That is something that we have been currently talking about as a board, about our special education and what we can do to help back up our director over special education. She's done a phenomenal job getting Medicaid funding and other funding to help special education. I think if it were to become a problem with that funding, that we would have to allocate other resources, and it would take a fine-tooth comb going through our budget and seeing what projects we could put off in order to fund those kids. I think that is an extremely needed program, and it is very well utilized throughout the district, so it does seem to stay atop her.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you. That's difficult because these things -- oh, what's? That is a difficult question because these things cost a lot of money, but I've had a lot of conversations with parents who are very concerned, and I've also spoken with our director, who is doing a really good job at trying to figure out the funding and make it work. She does a really good job, but the concerns that I have, or that we're following procedures and protocols to the very best ability that we can, and making sure that all of the services that we, that are, that are legally supposed to be provided, are provided. And that's one thing that Janelle is really good, really good at, is getting to make sure that each of those students have their individual needs fulfilled. And one goal that I really, really was, really thought was really important, that I brought as a suggestion when we were doing our board goals, was to figure out how we could support special services better. And so, what we ended up with as a board goal was that we would all meet with her and find out what we could do, what we as board members could do to support her better.
Thank you. And Dave?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. How will you ensure that disability accommodations and services are preserved and adequately funded in the face of potential governmental cuts?
We just have to figure it out. I mean, we're going right now, I don't know about the money for anything, but we have to figure it out. It's very important to the parents and the children. They get, they're just like any other child. They need everything we can give them, and so it's quite important, and we'll have to figure it out when we get it. Bye.
Okay, thank you. And Heather?
Thank you. So, as has been noted by my colleagues here, yes, special ed funding is something that is on top of mind, I know, in the district, as well as with parents that have special needs children. I actually work for a nonprofit right now that we focus with adults and children with disabilities, and we work with the Arches Program, which is the post-secondary, and it's really a phenomenal program where we work with these students that leave high school and continue to develop their independent living skills. I think we can all acknowledge the frustration with the legislature when they declined that additional funding that was requested for special needs and special ed programs, and so we're also grappling with limited funding coming from the state. I think our director, Janelle Harris, has done a phenomenal job finding ways in which we can do some Medicaid billing to recoup some of that, and through that funding, we've been able to hire additional aides and get her the support she needs. So, I think it's important to recognize that we also are very cognizant of the limitations that are there. I also know one of the things coming up, the ISBA, which is the State Board Association, that's also some of the top priorities of what they intend to lobby for with the legislature this coming fall. So, I think it's, again, very much top of mind, and I think we truly are doing what we can. I always encourage parents to not hold back if they need to talk to their principals, the directors, and so forth, if they're not getting their needs met. It's hard to address it if we don't know about it, so top of mind, something certainly to continue to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next question has to do with curriculum censorship and local control. With the other legislature increasingly overriding school districts on curriculum, textbooks, library books, banners, and posters, how will you protect local control? And let's start with Deanna.
Oh, what's? I want local control. I've always felt that this is, this is one of my top priorities. As far as local control on curriculum, one thing that I have appreciated about this is, one thing that the legislature did that I actually appreciated was required parents to be a part of that curriculum, the curriculum adoption committee, and it worked so well. The parents were so motivated, and they did a fabulous job reviewing all that curriculum. They were able to see the awesome curriculum that we have, and we were able to showcase, and it really kind of bridged that gap, and so that's one thing I will say that was positive. As far as the library books, I really didn't get involved in that as much, but as far as like the lessons for teachers and things, they have a lot of flexibility, and they are able to really do the work that they need to do and really stick to core subjects, which I think is also very important.
Thank you. Dave? The question has to do with curriculum censorship and local control. With the other legislature increasingly overriding school districts on curriculum, textbooks, library, library books, banners, and posters, how will you protect local control?
Well, they can try to take that stuff away from me, but it's, we have great teachers here. We have great -- oh, I'm sorry.
Start again. Smile and mic.
They know they can try. But anyway, we've got great people working here, superintendent on them, and what's right is right, and they will tell us what needs to happen. And I remember when I was there, they had an open door, and the people were tested and looking at books, and they'd bring it to me and to read it. Good, that's great. Should test us, but I think we do a number of jobs, and trust what we have there. I'm sure not an expert, but I know it's right.
Thank you. Heather?
So, I will echo what Deanna mentioned about our curriculum committees and the encouragement of parental involvement. We've had great parents come in and be involved, and I will say, I kind of stepped away from the curriculum department because that is not my bailiwick, and so I like to, you know, stay in my lane and trust those that have the education degrees and know, you know, know what is good and what isn't good. I mean, my kids have left school quite a number of years ago, and so, anyway, I kind of stood back and watched and listened to my fellow board members as they participated in that. As far as the censorship of texts or books in a library, or the kerfuffle that happened over the banner in Ada County, I struggle with it because I think there are messages placed into things that aren't the original intent, and so I think we need to be judicious in how we do this because it's, while, yes, we need and want to protect our children, at the same time, we need to provide the ability for critical thinking, to be able to think for themselves and not be told how to think. And frankly, while the censorship and things are being removed, what concerns me more is what are we stifling? What are we keeping from being published, or written, or designed by creating these boundaries that really are not based entirely on things that we should be concerned about? Anyway, that's my position. Thank you.
Thanks. Megan?
I think when it comes to legislation, we can only do what we can do with what we're given, and so it's just working in those things, but I also think that if we want to change it, then we have to find the correct avenues to change it. So, if we don't appreciate the censorship that's happening with banners or et cetera, then we have to find that correct avenue, and I think creating relationships with the legislatures, we get to have meetings with them every now and then, and we get to go to Boise and see them there. I think just those relationships can help you have open communication with them and telling them, these are their concerns we're seeing in real schools and real classrooms, and so that a change can be made there. And I want to just back up what Deanna said, that I think adding parents to the curriculum committee has been very helpful. We've had really educated and diverse groups of parents that are really focused on helping the kids get the best they can out of their curriculum books, and I've really appreciated seeing them work with the district office to do that.
Okay, our next section is teaching history accurately. How will you ensure that U.S. history is taught accurately and truthfully, including difficult topics like slavery, Native American issues, and racism? And we'll start with you, Dave.
Let's remind that again. First of all, you should not --
Are you talking?
I did, I did. It's fine.
It's green.
It's green. Say that again.
How will you ensure that U.S. history is taught accurately and truthfully, including difficult topics like slavery, Native American issues, and racism?
I don't know how I would know for sure that I'd get told about it, but why would someone with their history, professor, teacher, change history? It's there, it's blatant, it's right in front of us. Anywhere. Why would you want to change it? Why would you want to hide it? It's what we did. If we had slavery around, we got, you know, stuff on the wrist of us, and we're moving forward. It will be better for it. You can't hide those things, though. That's not.
Okay, thank you. And Heather?
Yeah, so I think, I think a lot of this relies on, obviously, the curriculum, which we've talked about already, that there is a very thorough vetting process of our curriculum. I was disappointed that our state superintendent recommended some curriculum from the state level that was a little head scratching. I can't remember exactly the title of it, but I remember looking, you know, they were pulling some of the excerpts that we actually pulled because it did not fall in line with what we felt was accurate representations, and so, you know, I think it's just about as a board, and then as the administration, and those that are involved in the curriculum being vigilant and making sure that sources are sourced properly, that they're also, I think what's also an important piece, which our district does a phenomenal job in, is with professional development, and teaching the teachers how to teach and how to use the curriculum properly, use the resources that are available to them, and I think it's just being vigilant and making sure we have checks and balances in place when working with teachers and then the, excuse me, the curriculum that does come across our desk. And so, again, I think it's, we can always do better, but I'm not a fan of rewriting history just to fit a certain narrative, so thank you.
Thank you. And Megan?
I think looking at it from a former teacher perspective, like, we're given the curriculum to utilize, and then you put out your class course curriculum from what's given to you from the district, and so I think at the district level, it's just, like Heather said, vigilant about reviewing the curriculum as we go through adoptions and checking it, and then we have expressed before that we want teachers to stick to the curriculum, and so that's also part of teacher development, is that they get the chance to go through it together, develop units together, and stick with that. I think that if we're pulling out outside sources, then that's where the waters get muddy on whether or not it follows our current adaptive curriculum, and if that's the case, we need to be able to keep an open dialogue with the community that they feel like they can come and tell us if there's an issue with the curriculum that's being used.
Thank you. And Deanna?
Thank you. Someone once said, "If we fail to learn from the mistakes of others, we are destined to make the same mistakes ourselves." I think it is so important that we learn from the mistakes that we have made in the past so that we are not making those same mistakes. And one, one thing that we should be doing is, when we learn what mistakes have been made, we do not want to repeat those mistakes. You know, that's one thing that's really important. We recently adopted a social studies curriculum, and it is phenomenal. It's so good, and I agree with what Megan said. If, if the curriculum is adhered to, you know, if we teach the curriculum, that's a, that's a place where, you know, we can make sure that everyone's kind of on the same page, we're learning the same things, and there is a process that if there is something that is taught that is not on the curriculum, you know, that, you know, it does require critical thinking, and there are ways, if there's something that a parent disagrees with, we listen. I read my emails. I listen. And one, one situation was, my daughter was doing a paper from outside sources, and it was cool because I said, hey, you realize this is kind of someone's opinion, and then we were able to talk about it. This is good. You are learning another perspective, and so that was good. It was a good thing, but it was also good that we could talk about it and say, let's talk about maybe, you know, several perspectives. It's good to learn those.
Thank you. The next question is about school funding and voucher impact. What are your thoughts on the new law providing $50 million in tax rebates for private school tuition? Let's start with Deanna. Let's start with Heather.
There's not enough time to go into this. As a part of my opening spiel, talked about the issues with key vouchers and I didn't get to finish it, so let me just read this real quickly. School vouchers are a key issue for public schools because they divert public taxpayer money away from public schools and reduce funding. This leads to budget cuts, school closures, larger class sizes and fewer resources for the majority of students to remain in the public system. Research has shown that vouchers often lack accountability and do not consistently improve student academic outcomes. I read the article that someone had in the paper, one of our teachers, they're our principals, as it turns out, that said they had talked to one of the private schools in town who, you know, we mentioned special service, special ed services. These schools don't even have to provide it because they have a waiting list of kids that don't need it already coming in. You know, but the irony is the school district, if those kids still want to play sports or be involved in the activities, the public schools still have to fund the referees and the coaches and the, and the, for those private school students that are taking advantage of those vouchers. I think it's going to be, you know, they're already suggesting a larger ask for this next year or for the coming legislative session. It really, the, this idea of choice that's being thrown around, we have choice in the public school. And that's also one of my key goals is that we need to look at continuing to advertise that we do have choice within our district. And the best place to provide that is within the public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Vouchers is a loaded question to, to a teacher. So I'm going to try to be delicate in my response on this. I, I think in the end, it will end up hurting our public schools and that our students will suffer. Because it will, like Heather said, it will divert a lot of funds away from them and we will have to be really strict and tight on our budgets. And I think it, number one, will hurt the special education programs first and foremost. And on the other side, I do think that people want choices. They want to be able to have different options and different avenues of education. My students, my students, my children are in the Montessori program at Tahiti and it is a different avenue that the district provides from regular structured learning. And they thrive in that. And I really enjoy being part of the district and letting them see that Montessori program. I think looking to other options to be more competitive with the voucher program would be a top priority in the next couple of years that we need to be aggressive about.
Thank you. Deanna?
Oh, turn it on. First of all, I talked to a neighbor who did not understand that charter schools are public schools. They are publicly funded schools. Anybody can apply for a voucher and start a school with, with public funds. So that, I strongly support that. There are different learning styles that children have and to have options and competition, it makes us all better. We can learn from each other. Oh, they're doing this and it works really well. Let's try that. And I think it's a really good thing. As far as our Idaho constitution, it provides for and therefore requires us to fund a free and common school. Common means the same as. So when I learned that, it really made me think. That's what we are required to fund according to our constitution. I do believe that private and religious schools should remain separate because if they are funded with public funds, they absolutely have to have oversight. And that would then make it so there are no private or religious schools. Because if you fund it, you have oversight and then it becomes a public school. And I think that's something that maybe some people haven't really thought through, that I want that choice to stay and therefore not be publicly funded.
Thank you. Dave?
Nice answers, good answers all the way down. I'm sorry. Good answers up here, but I think our legislature made a mistake. This is House Bill 92, it's terrible. No accountability. There's, you do anything you want with the money and it just puts all, lack of money, they take away from our schools. And we're going to end up with more school buildings, just like a couple now, Isors. And it's sad. It's here and I don't understand why we have to do this. I think the last few years in the legislature, they've tried to cower to parents who listen to them closer or whatever, but I think that's wrong. No, we're on the right track. Our school district is on the right track. And we don't need any different flavors scattered around our community. So, you know, if that makes sense, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Our next question is on separation of church and state. What is your position on the role of government in religious education and how will you ensure the district maintains appropriate boundaries regarding religion in public schools? And we'll start with Megan.
I really think that we have by law boundaries already set. And I haven't heard of any violations yet, sorry, just hit my mic. So I think just adhering to that and I, like in Oklahoma, how the state superintendent in Oklahoma decided to enforce Bible study throughout the day, I, we could never allow something like that to happen. I think it just would cause chaos at the school. And so I just firmly back up that we keep it separate. And if there's any division in there, then I think that our church should stay over here and our schools should be over here and we should be able to learn without feeling pressured from other outside sources that way.
Thank you. Deanna?
Yes, thank you. Well, I was able to observe a class of Mary Ann McGory and she teaches a very, religions of the world, something like that. I don't know what it's called. Wait a second, my mic wasn't on. I was able to observe a class of Mary Ann McGory who is here and, and she teaches a class about religions of the world. And I, and, and when I came in to observe her class, it was just so well done. And I wished I could have videoed it. It was so good. And to me, I feel like learning about religions of the world, I think is a really good thing because with, not, not in a religious sense like a Bible study, not that. I'm talking about as it relates to, you know, geography and wars and, you know, all of these things, calamities across the world. It's helpful to understand that people believe differently. I think that's helpful. And I think it makes kids be able to think critically and everything. So not teaching any specific religion, but if it was a class on teaching major religions of the world or in response to what is this conflict about, maybe different belief systems, I think that's very good. Now, teaching religion as in trying to persuade, no. No, there's a place for that and that would be at church and at home, not in school. But I also think if we're teaching about one major religion, don't disallow other major religions. Absolutely, we're teaching one belief system, you've got to teach the opposite. You have to teach that. And that might be difficult. So maybe don't teach something if you can't teach the opposite as well.
Thank you. And Dave?
Good answers along here. I don't know what I can add to it, but they should be taught in our schools to learn in the context of history. What mistakes have we made? Well, it's religion and good or bad or whatever it is. It's why it shouldn't be taught in our schools and left that way. So I think it's all right to do it.
Thank you. And Heather?
Thank you. I do think there are enough guardrails in place currently where we do keep the separation between church and state in that respect. I appreciate that, yes, teaching the differences, teaching, you know, how to be respectful and sensitive to other religions than our own is something that can be taught in a classroom. Obviously, we're not wanting to push or indoctrinate children any one, one way or the other. And I know that tends to be a theme or a concern that that's why people want to get out of public schools because they feel they're being indoctrinated in whether it's a religion of a Christian nature or an ideology of a lifestyle. I think it's important to know that there are guardrails in place that as curriculum is discovered, or as curriculum is taught and presented, there are enough guardrails in place that that kind of indoctrination is just not taking place. I, you know, we, we live in a predominantly LDS community and so there might be a thought that more of that influence is taking place in our schools. Again, I think it's about being sensitive to those around us and how we're presenting and interacting with one another and, you know, just teaching the beatitudes of being good and good with one another. And there, there is a time and a place to encourage those kinds of values that doesn't necessarily have to be ascribed to a particular religion. But thank you.
The next question has to do with board representation in governments. What is your response to those who say the school board hasn't been listening to the entire community's needs? And let's start with Deanna.
Gosh, there's so many aspects, oh, whoops. There are so many aspects of this because when you say hasn't been listening to the community's needs, do you mean buildings? Do you mean, like, I mean, I guess ideas, thoughts, curriculum? Like, there's so many things that we could talk about. But I guess in response to, I guess I'll talk about the thing that's been in the news, Highland. Highland fire. Right now, at this moment in time, that just has to be a priority because, you know, obviously it burned and it needs to be built in a way that will be ready for the next 50 to 100 years. And so I think the responsible thing for us to do is to build it for the future. So right now, our priority is that, but it doesn't mean that when there is a need at Sintrey or Pokie or any of the elementary schools, a new roof, that we can't also do those things. We have to be able to really balance things. But it, just because, you know, the major funding right now is going for that, it doesn't mean that other things are getting neglected. We have every concern for every other building and every other, every other classroom. As far as curriculum, I, I can't speak for anyone else, but I read my emails, I listen to the parents, and I think it's so important that we read our emails, we listen to the parents when there's a concern. It doesn't matter where they live, they're all kids.
Thank you. Dave?
If you repeat the question, please.
It has to do with board representation in governments. What is your response to those who say the school board hasn't been listening to the entire community's needs?
Well, that's, that's silly. I read the 800 emails a month or a week or whatever they are. And talking to everybody who wants to talk to me, I'm all open and I'm talking to them. But it really comes down to my feelings for me, or five on the board, and what's right for the kids and their families. It's pretty simple when you think of what's right for the children, which is going to be right for their family and make decisions. It's really quite an easy decision to make. So, okay, I don't know if I answered it or not, but we listen. We, we listen and we try and then we talk about it and do the best that we can.
Thank you. Heather?
So when I was elected four years ago, it was the most eye opening experience because you get, you go through this election experience and last time was a lot more contentious than this time, but you're constantly defending yourself and your views and your opinions and you, you're assigned to a particular zone, so not even the whole community gets to vote for me or one of my colleagues. Once you become a member of the board, you now are a member of a group and you no longer have a singular voice, you no longer represent just your zone, you now represent the whole community, which is a good thing because now we're making decisions on behalf of everyone. But it was a very challenging thing. The other thing that I wasn't aware of is because during election time, boy, I had to answer every email, every Facebook post, every phone call, every text. But then as a member of the board, you're instructed that you are now as a, you are now a group speaking. You no longer speak out as yourself. I think I've kind of kicked against the pricks a little bit on this one during my tenure so far because I do want a response. I do want people to find me approachable. I do want them to send me an email or a text, phone call. And I won't probably communicate as publicly because, you know, there's all these open meeting laws. I can't discuss things with my fellow board members, but I do want to be approachable. And I think that's one of the rules that I've struggled with the most because I understand as a parent or as a community member, when something has got me riled up, I want a response. I don't want crickets. I also would encourage that if you are interested in learning more, you need to come to a board meeting. You need to get involved, you need to come and listen to why and how things are decided because it's not done in a vacuum. Thank you.
Thanks. Megan?
First, I would just want to tell them that I'm sorry that they feel that way. I feel like before I was on the board, I sent a couple of emails to board members and let them know my opinions on things. And so I do feel like we have avenues that you can contact us. And I also, during, dare I bring it up? During our boundary discussions, I was stopped everywhere I went to talk about boundaries. And when we talked about Franklin Track, I got stopped at the grocery store, I got stopped at the post office. I feel like just making sure that I'm approachable is a key component to that. And also just, have you tried emailing us? Have you tried reaching out to the principal at your building? I mean, I've had emails about water quality at schools, like any concern you have, we are so happy to hear those and to address them if we can. I can't answer the 300 emails that we have about Washington Elementary, but I read all of them. So I think just making sure that they reach out and let us know about their concerns because we can't address it if you're discussing it on Facebook and we don't know about it.
Thank you. Our next question is about board independence and accountability. What specific steps will you take to ensure that you have sufficient knowledge to make educated, independent decisions on issues before the board rather than simply rubber stamping recommendations from the district personnel? And Dave, let's start with you.
That's, it's easy to do, I'm elected by a lot of, oh, I'm sorry. You're elected by a lot of people, it's a big responsibility. And you work with others on the board, administrators, anybody, and to answer our questions, but it's my decision, it's our decision, but it's my decision that I make the right choice thinking about the kids and what's right. So I don't know if I answered the question or not, but anyway, it's something I've heard before, but no, it's quite easy. You have a responsibility and you have to handle that responsibility. If not, if you can't do that, then leave.
Thank you. And Heather?
So another lesson I learned when I became a board member four years ago, you know, you come in with all these great ideas that you think you're going to change the district and you're going to make all these, you learn very, very quickly that there is a huge machine that works behind the scenes at the school district. And I can attest now, three and a half, three and three quarters years in, that we have an incredibly strong administration, very dedicated, very cohesive. You know, on occasion, we interact with other smaller districts or other districts in the state. And I can attest that we have probably one of the strongest administration in, in the state. They have programs, they look out for each other, they look out for their staff, they look out for teachers and certainly most importantly, they put the priority of the students ahead. And so, again, I learned very quickly that when things are brought before the board to discuss or to have, it was not about any of our individual agendas or even our collective agendas. It was always looking to, I found myself deferring more and more to some of the administrators because they have the experience, they've been here, they have the degrees, they have the, you know, feet on the street, working inside the schools. the, you know, feet on the street, working inside the schools. And it doesn't matter how many times I would visit a school or sit in a meeting or listen, I'm never going to have that kind of experience that our administration does bring. And so while it may feel sometimes like it's rubber stamping, I think it's also a, a deferring of respect for the role that they play and the experience that they bring to the table. And yes, sometimes I, I, I wonder why they're coming to me, but I understand that this is the nature of what a school board is. But yeah, I, I think there's, and I do do my research, so I'll put that out there, too.
Thank you. All right, Megan?
I think to avoid rubber stamping, it just takes reading through the paperwork that we've been given. We get that, or it's emailed to us and ample time for us to review it, and then asking all the questions. I, our superintendent has allowed us to contact any of the directors we need to, to answer their questions, and I've called several of them and chatted with them about things I didn't understand in the packets, or I've done school visits. I got to go to school and learn about the remedial reading program because we were reviewing that in our curriculum and to learn like what they're actually doing with concerns that I had through that so that I wasn't just rubber stamping. I understood what was happening, how it was utilized, and was able to make a clear decision on those things. So just doing the research ourselves and, and also trusting the experts in it.
Thank you. And Deanna?
Thank you. I, I love to read research. I think it's probably kind of a silly thing, but I love to read research. I love period read research. I, I think it's just so interesting to go into it with kind of an opinion and then read this research and really find out, you know what, this is maybe a little bit different than what I thought because maybe, you know, after you read the research, you can really find a new perspective, and I love that. And I, I guess I learned that when I was getting my master's degree. I didn't like reading all the, you know, 35-page article before, but now I do. And we are supposed to read research and we are supposed to be aware of data, but then we ask the directors, what do you think about this? And with their knowledge and expertise and experience, I have learned so much. And sometimes things have been different than what I thought, than the goal when I, I talked to them, and I wrote, and then they can show their perspective, and it is just so valuable. And it's so, I just love that because, you know, we can, at the end of the conversation, we mostly agree, sometimes we have not. And that's okay. And that is perfectly fine because, you know, everybody kind of has a new, a different perspective, and that is perfectly fine. Also, the Island State School Board Association is a way that we can collaborate with other school districts and we can ask, how are you guys solve this problem? How are you teaching this? How are you doing this? And, and it's a collaborative thing that we do at least twice a year, but that we also keep in touch with them. Like, as a board chair, we do a board chair meetup and things like that.
Thank you. The last question before we go into their closing remarks on the school board portion of the forum has to do with supporting educators and staff. How will you support teachers and staff in our district? And what role do you believe Pocatello Education Association should play in supporting district employees? Let's start with Heather.
Turn on my mic. I love our teachers. I look, I'm actually married to a teacher, so firsthand, I know the stresses, the successes, the excitement, the, the disappointment that can happen throughout the day. And I think our teachers are some of the hardest that work hands down in our district, so very much a supporter of them. I'm also, have also learned through these four years of what the whole bargaining process is. I always like to go and sit in the peanut gallery and watch how that process works and listening to what the needs of the teachers through the PEA and how they're representing their constituents, and then listening on the school board side, or excuse me, on the school district side, on how we're trying to balance what they ask versus what we can afford. And so being involved in that process, if only from a sideline, because eventually I do have to sign off and approve it, it's important for me to understand both sides. I do appreciate that it's difficult to be a teacher, there are limitations, both, you know, you're overworked and underpaid. But as I've mentioned earlier with another comment in that, the emphasis that our district puts on professional development is bar none, the best in the state. We put a huge emphasis in mentoring those first-year teachers to make sure that they understand and can get and are acclimated into their role as a teacher and then continuing to mentor and develop through their years as a teacher. I believe that the PEA is an important role because they're the ones that are going to be the backbone to represent our teachers, and I support what they do as well.
Thank you. Megan?
I think teachers are probably, they're so underpaid and under, I could go on and on about this for our experience, but I, I think just supporting what the district does. And I did not have a part in this, this was before I became a member of the school board, but our, Amy Bowie has set up very, very well organized teacher development, and we, as a board, got to create new roles this year, and we were very strategic about how we did that, and one of them is on teacher development and being able to see what they're doing so that we can help support them in those programs. And so we get to have reports every month now from her about what development is happening, and that way we are aware of what's going on. I just think just supporting that direction and then, like Heather said, with the negotiations, it is always interesting to see the flip side from one side to another. But just letting our teachers know that we, we care about their voices and what they need and supporting them as much as we can while also being physically responsible as a district.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you. First of all, I think we should always assume the best in each other, and that, I think, goes a long way. My children have had remarkable teachers that have just put their whole lives and did, just dedicated their lives to put their whole heart into their work. And you, and you can just, you know them, you know who they are. And I would also agree with the professional development. My sister works in a district in another state that we'll not be named. And the professional development is, they will buy any curriculum the teachers want, anything, they'll buy as much as they want, and then they don't collaborate and develop that curriculum so that they really have a roadmap on how to do it. And it just sits on the shelf. And our district does an excellent job in making good use of that curriculum, and that's a way to support the teachers. I will say one thing that I think we should be, we could work on, and that is encouraging and supporting innovation because there are teachers with ideas and, and motivation to innovate, and I would like to showcase and encourage that more, especially with AI. I want to know what the, what teachers are doing, showcase that, encourage other teachers to use these things because the kids are using it and they know it. And it's our job to be aware and aggressive of all the latest technology and use it.
Thank you. And Dave?
How can I follow that, Dave? He did quite well. All I can say is teachers are heavily to the school district, the backbone of it, and you have to be wholesome, you have to talk to Mary Ann and collaborate if they want to talk to me, you have to be supporting them. You know, if someone wants to press a new, I'm sure that there's programs inside the teachers' administration that they can discuss that. It's not all cut and dry. So, anyway, there's a lot of faith, but I got into this because, some of the teachers, you know, teachers seem like they need to be protected. I think that's my personality is protect somebody, so that's what I did for protection. So, Mary Ann?
All right, thank you very much. That concludes all of our questions, and now we'll go to the next section for closing remarks. And just to remind everyone, you have two minutes for your closing remarks, and we'll start with Megan.
By nature, I keep things short and sweet, so probably need to put up in parts. So I just want to end by saying that I find what I did, I continue to push for educational excellence, that we've talked about this past year about reading a lot, and I think that that is a huge goal of mine, that we continue to push for educational excellence in reading and building a strong foundation for all of our learners. And another thing that I want to keep supporting is the teachers, and by supporting the teacher development programs and continuing to visit the schools, it's always very interesting to see how different schools are running and the different programs that they have, and just supporting the teachers face-to-face that way and being able to ask, what can we do for you at, at your building? And the last thing, I really want to have a goal on community involvement and to be able to further that with the community so that we can get more feedback on current and future proposals before they are finished. I believe that advocacy should be transparent and that we should have an open dialogue with our community, and it's important to hear their concerns and to be able to be reflective on how to best move forward after the census. And I think the district works best when all voices are heard. Thank you guys for your time, and I would be honored to finish up.
Thank you very much. Deanna, you're next.
Okay. Serving on the school board for this past three and a half years has been one of the most meaningful experiences of my life. I've learned so much, I gained so much from different perspectives. There is good in everyone, there is good ideas across everyone. And I, I just feel like I gained a deep respect for teachers, administrators, families, and people that, that think differently than me. There is just so much good in learning a new perspective. As also, but as a fiscal conservative, it is hard to see how much money it costs to run the district, but I've also come to appreciate that more, that we spend most of the money on the staff, salaries, and benefits. And I just think that is absolutely right. That's exactly the right thing to do. They are the most valuable resource we have, and I, that's why I fully support that. When I first got on the school board, I read pages and pages and pages of salaries of other districts that were about our size, like, there's like 200 pages, and I just wanted to skim through and to make sure that we were being competitive. I want our district to be competitive so that we can have, we, we are being fair and competitive and, and have, are able to have the best. So I, I support that, I support the capital improvements that we've done and curriculum resources, and I'm proud of the steps that we have taken toward transparency, making things more accessible, making, and with the curriculum adoption, bringing parents in in a meaningful way, you know, to really read through these curriculums and have a voice, have a, a voice and an actual vote in these curriculum adoption processes. And I, I believe we have an incredible opportunity to strengthen our students in our schools, and my guiding principle will always be the same, what is best for our school. And I just believe in this district, I believe we need to focus on what unites us, and we can continue to build a strong future. And I would be honored to continue serving as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave?
Dave? How can I start this? You heard me, and I think I'm smiling. But I enjoy being at the school, district, board, everything about it. And in fact, it was something that I didn't think I'd feel that way, but I sure did, and I want to do it again. So if I, when you're old, it's great, if it were hard, it's not, I think we've got a good future, they'll go pick over and continue. We have a dark school district here, and we shouldn't mess with it, not too much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. I think it was a, a well-worth opportunity for me to share some of my views, think about some of my views, and hopefully those that are listening hear some of my views. So this election is not about me or my opponents, or it's about the future of every single student in our school district. I'm running for school board because, like you, I believe a world-class education is the foundation of a strong community. I just wanted to quick brag on our school district a little bit. Our district has a 92% graduation. We have the highest teacher retention rate in, amongst other large districts. We have several educators that have won Best in Nation back-to-back Milk and Educator Awards, Presidential Awards for Excellence in Math and Science. Our learners excel in English, Math, and Science. We have gifted and talented programs, the Special Ed Services, STEM Experiences. We provide dual enrollment opportunities and advanced placement courses, and we have significant scholarships that come into our high schools that are, our high school students that are graduating. And unbelievably, we haven't even talked one bit about the PV Tech that sits just, what, a mile or so from this building. I, I am very proud of the work that we did to get that building instituted, and we have thousands of kids that are coming into that program to learn about different innovative choices about their life. And not all, not everyone's going to college, but some of them have another, another path, and we get to help highlight and encourage that. In these last four years serving on the board, I've seen firsthand both the incredible talent of our educators and the real challenges that we face. My professional experience in nonprofit management has prepared me to tackle several of these issues with competence and a clear-eyed focus on results. The conversations tonight have just reinforced three of my primary commitments to this community: student success with targeted investments in early literacy and career technical educating, education, supporting our educators, supporting that bargaining process to ensure fair and equitable compensation, as well as to continue to support the district efforts to provide quality professional development and fiscal responsibility and transporta, or excuse me, transparency. A vote for me is a vote for collaborative and thoughtful leadership that puts students first. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, well, we're going to take five minutes here, and thank you to all the school board candidates tonight.
The second section of tonight's forum will include the candidates for mayor and Fugge and the city council. The format will be the same. We will call on each candidate, and they will have one minute for their introduction. Next, we will rotate through the candidates where they will have one and a half minutes to answer each question, and then each candidate will have the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement at the end.
We're going to start with our opening remarks, and each of you one minute. I'm going to start with Norman Reese.
Thank you. I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this. I don't think we appreciate all the time and effort that goes into something like this, and so thank you very much. I think it's a great public service. My name is Norman Reese. I'm running for city council seat number four. I was appointed to that position in February of 2022 to fill a vacancy that occurred on the council, and this is my first time running for an elected position. I am a product of the schools of this community. I was born and raised in Pocatello. I went to Serene Elementary, I went to Alumina Junior High, and I graduated from Highland High School in 1978. In fact, high school was the last opportu, was the last time that I was elected to anything. You are looking at the Highland Class of '78 class clan. And there are these two of my classmates here who will verify the information for you. After high school, now I hold it, I've been a little more serious in there than in years. After high school, I attended Iowa State University, and I obtained a bachelor's degree there, and then went on to law school at BYU in Pocono, Utah.
Thank you. Mandy Peace?
Hello, I'm Mandy Peace, and I'm running for Chubak City Council Seat Four as well. I was born and raised just down the road, kind of far off in Pocatello, and for about the past 10 years, I've been proud to call Chubak my home. It's where I have chosen to raise my family. Service has been at the heart of who I am, and aside from my long list of working with volunteer organizations in our community, I work in public service as a management assistant and grant finance specialist. And in those programs, I help manage federal budgets and programming that really make a difference in people's lives. I also serve on ISU's Title IX Process Investigation Team and Pocatello's Human Relations Advisory Committee. Here in Chubak, I've seen both our challenges and our potential. I'm running to support smart growth and accessibility, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. I want to make sure Chubak continues to grow in a way that truly feels like home for everyone.
And you, Kevin?
Yes, thank you, and I'd like to particularly thank that, that I say here on the League of Women Voters, these are the odd good times for us to get together and talk about things. You know, one of the great benefits of any election is to have the opportunity to have discussion. And if we're wise and like the visual pool is to everybody, because people have to know this, and if we shouldn't be written, they shouldn't be written off. I have a home in this area also, I have lived in this area my whole life, I love it, it's all in my heart. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. I raised my family here, some of them are still here, and some of them have gone other places. One of the, one of the challenges that we have is making sure that we can provide things for families so that they can stay around. But it's interesting, as I've talked to my kids about this, I'm not sure that they'd be here even if we had some pretty good jobs, because where they are, they truly feel like they're needed, and they're making contributions in their communities, too. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, and we want to continue to make contributions to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Burke? Thank you, Rodney Burge.
Thank you for those participating in the audience and for the League of Women Voters and Idaho State Journal for sponsoring this event today. I like the rest of the candidates here. I've spent a significant amount of my life in the city of Chubak. We've raised our family here for the last 33 years. And we, this is a place that we call home. Professionally, I consider myself a businessman. I consider myself a servant of the public. I've started a number of successful businesses. Some of those we still operate. I've had the opportunity to be an educator at Idaho State University. I served for seven years as the Public Works Director here at the city of Chubak, which afforded me the opportunity to also serve as the Executive Director of the Chubak Development Authority and to serve as a board member of the city's Employee Health Trust. I currently serve as the Executive Director of a nonprofit here in East Idaho that facilitates financial administrative and land use planning for small communities that do not have the professional resources in-house. And it's a very fulfilling, rewarding opportunity to be able to do that. As your next mayor, I would look forward to applying these skills to the operations of the city of Chubak and to elevate the city to its highest potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will start our first question. And so the first question is, what is your vision for Chubak's future? And Mandy Peace, what do you see?
Yeah, my vision for Chubak's future really falls in line with building the foundation first and then looking at growth and development that will not only ensure that the people we have here stay here, but also that we can bring in some new growth and build up our small businesses and encourage the growth of our income, to raise median income and raise the opportunity to be able to buy homes here in Chubak. Additionally, I really see us leaning towards and leaning on our, our big powerhouses right around us, university included, I N L included, and just looking into the, the services that we can get from our local university and assuring that all of those amazing students that are getting their education there really develop that professional timeline with us here in Chubak. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin.
Yes, you know, it's interesting when you start talking about vision because that's something that's vital for a community to go forward. And in my opinion, it always has to be a shared vision. As a leader, you certainly do bring in the vision, the direction that you would like to take and go. It's really important to include others in developing what that vision is. And as I think about the vision of the city of Chubak, we stand on the shoulders of giants, people who've come before us, who've set a great foundation and served throughout, done things that have made our community what it is today. And sometimes if we're not careful, we can knock down something that has great value. And I think that it's important that we make sure that we look at the things that are in place, recognize the value of them, and then bring a vision that will add to that. And that's the vision that I see. I see Chubak as a place that is prosperous, is doing well, and is doing good things. And the important thing to do is to come together and with all parties, have the discussions. Where do we go from here? How do we get to those next steps? Those next steps are absolutely vital. They don't come easily. And as a matter of fact, some of the things that you find, some of the very best ideas that really have an opportunity to work, they aren't given enough opportunity to be heard. And so I think, to me, it's important that as we create the vision for a community, that we reach out and let everybody have an opportunity to help see what that vision is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rodney Burge.
Thank you. Great question. If you've paid attention to our campaign thus far, you'll know that vision is one of our key pillars. I believe every organization needs to have a vision. We need to know who we are and what services we want to provide for this community to match what our community expects from us. To facilitate that vision, we have to be listeners first. The good ideas don't come from inside City Hall. They come from our residents and our businesses in the community. Currently, I will share with you, there are no advisory committees in the city of Chubak. There's no method for our residents to voice their concerns as a collective body. One of my first visions is to institute that opportunity for our residents to participate in advisory committees. And we've identified four areas that that could and should occur. And that's in building and development, in our local small business support, in economic development, and one that's a passion of mine is parks and recreation, to make sure that the, we have great amenities in this community to serve our population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Norman Reese.
My campaign model is building on the past with a vision for the future. And this is a great community in which we live. You don't have to go far to see other communities that have problems that we don't have. You know, we don't have them because our leaders have looked forward with a vision and taken measures to ensure that we avoid those kinds of problems. I would like to see continued growth in Chubak, but also balance that with keeping the aesthetics that make our community so appealing to people. If we can do that, we will attract businesses. We will attract more residents. And we will see the growth that we need, but again, tempered with the things that help us keep the aesthetics that make this such a wonderful community in which to live. Thank you.
Thank you. My next question has to do with governance and transparency. How would you guarantee transparency and fiscal responsibility of this government? Let's start with Kevin.
I'm going to get a question for that question. You know, transparency is an interesting thing. I've joked before that if you get too transparent, you disappear. And with that being said, it is important to be transparent. People need to know what's going on and what decisions are being made at the city level. At the city level, we need to really get a job about that. We have a lot of different places, even turn, finding information of what's happening in the city. Now, fiscal responsibility, in my opinion, as elected official, probably is our biggest responsibility far and away. And as I look at that, one of the things that we do is we develop budgets, is make sure that those budgets are out plenty of time and people have opportunities to see what's happening with them. Now, I will mention that over the last two years, we have a budget hearing where we have the public to come and make comments about our budget. And for the last two years, all of them have been positively supportive. And those who come in and ask the right questions about our budget, all right, if to look at the budget, we don't have a complicated budget in the city of Chubak. It's very understandable. People come in and look at that budget, they see that we truly are being fiscal responsible. The fact about our budget is this, we have things that probably would like to, to fund that we just don't have the money for. And so councils have the obligation to determine where those funds are going to go. And I think over the past years, we've made some really good decisions about what we're doing with our budget money. Thank you.
Rodney.
Thank you for the question. I see that as a, very much a two-part question, so let me try and address them independent. The first would be transparency. It's a common word that we hear in all forms of government. Transparency, I think, requires more than just answering the questions that come at us. We have to be able to provide that information to our community in easily accessible manners. This, this building, this beautiful building houses technology that is state of the art. And yet, we don't broadcast our council meetings, our Land Use Commission meetings, or our Chubak Development Authority meetings. As, as referenced, as I mentioned, as an executive director for small communities, the little town of Lava Hot Springs streams their council meetings. They've figured out a way to get their community involved. I think it's very important for us to openly share the events, the activities, and the decisions of the city. With fiscal responsibility, I acknowledge Kevin's comments. And the, and the budget process has greatly improved in the past few years. One of the difficult things that we don't realize about city government is that we budget one year at a time. And so it becomes very difficult to have a financial plan that is beyond just the 12 months that starts October 1st and ends September 30th. I believe that we, in addition to that one-year budgeting cycle, need to have financial forecasting, at least in a five-year projection, so we know what other challenges may lie ahead of us and we can prepare appropriately for them.
Thank you. Norm.
As I mentioned earlier, I was appointed to the city council in February of 2022. And that was a baptism of fire for me when we came up against the first budget hearing that I experienced. At that time, there were several community members who showed up that had concerns about transparency. And as Mayor England and as Rodney Burge both said, in the, in the years since that time, things have greatly improved. Every year now, since then, we have had very detailed presentations from all of the various city departments, starting early in the year up until it's time to determine a budget. I've been very impressed with the detail and the transparency that every department head showed. And anybody that doesn't think we're transparent should come to those meetings or should reference the materials that are available online. They truly have the interests of our citizens at heart. Our, our folks here strive to run on exactly what they need to do to provide services that we need to provide to our community. I'm very impressed with the local, with the department heads here in the, at the city. It's very important that we provide the things that are most critical as a local government. We have to take care of our first responders. We have to take, we have to provide adequate fire and police protection. And we have to protect our first responders as well. And then we also need to maintain our highways, roads, and streets. Because if you let those go, you not only, you not only push the problem down the road, it becomes exponentially greater, and then it costs more. So part of being fiscally responsible is paying and keeping things maintained and keeping our first responders to where they can protect our community.
Thank you. Mandy.
Yeah, thank you for this question. I, one thing I truly believe in is transparency within budgets. And it's actually a really big part of my job that I do every single day is, we work through five years' worth of grant budgets. And in that, we develop every single line item and our expected expenses throughout those five years. One thing I personally spearheaded was a development of a program that helps me project on a bi-weekly basis where expenditures are going to land based on current usage. That's something I openly share with every single person that I come into contact with at the university and any other person within the Department of Education, whether it's federal or state level. So that's something that I, I'm passionate about. And in addition to that, I think accessibility, I'm going to kind of chime in on what you said about access to like Zoom meetings, for instance, for our council meetings or any other public hearings. I also look at accessibility for those who may have transportation needs or maybe a hearing impairment or any other impairment that might prohibit them from actually participating actively. Or possibly, you know, a misunderstanding of what the budget is going to say and the words within a budget. Because as we know, sometimes it can be a little confusing. So just making that a really clear and concise understanding for all of our residents.
Thank you. Our third question is on economic development and infrastructure. What is your philosophy on using economic incentives to foster economic development? And how will you ensure these investments truly benefit residents with livable wage jobs? And let's start with Rodney.
That's a difficult question for, at the city level. I'll do, there's a lot of questions inside of there, so let me please try and address them as I feel is appropriate. Economic development, we often have heard the city be challenged with, why don't we recruit businesses to come here? What are we doing? What's the city doing to, to get a Chick-fil-A in our community? And I can share with you that, that Chick-fil-A knows more about our community than we do, and they'll decide to come here when the data makes sense. But specific to bigger economic development issues, I'm a firm believer that, number one, we need to compete as a region. Pocatello, Chubak, Bannock County, the Bannock Development Corp., we need to compete as a region for jobs, for employment, rather than compete against each other. I think there was a piece in there about infrastructure and incentives. I guess I'll...
Investments for livable wages, livable wage jobs.
I'm not sure, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure that the city has much influence in livable wage jobs as it stands by itself as the city of Chubak. I do believe that we do have the economic development tool of urban renewal that helps us invest in our infrastructure, that's a quality tool that the city has taken advantage of in the past. And I hope that's addressed all of those questions. Good luck, Norm.
Thank you. Yes. Well, as Rodney was just mentioning, the Idaho Urban Renewal Law of 1965 allows for tax increment financing that in certain situations can be a very good tool to finance development of certain property within the city. And the reason why that is one tool of several that are important for a city our size is this. We are not small enough for some grants and we're not large enough for others. Chubak right now with this population base is kind of stuck. And so we have to use things like TIF districts and so forth in the right situations to help finance the infrastructure. Now, the economy, the local economy. Last week, we just had a presentation from the Portnitz Valley Development Corporation. They told us by, based on their data, interviewing prospective businesses that did not locate here, why are you not coming to Chubak? What was the reason? It wasn't because of housing concerns. It wasn't because of recreational facilities. It wasn't because of school facilities. The number one concern was lack of airport transportation. Now, I understand that it's the Pocatello Airport, but the full title is the Pocatello Regional Airport. It is not the Pocatello Municipal Airport. We need to have a say, and I think the, the more, the more, the better, to get a think tank to figure out how we can make better air transportation out there at the airport. Because without it, we're not going to attract the businesses. They are looking for air service more than just one flight a day that leaves in the middle of the day to where you can't make your connections to the hubs. So that's a big thing that we have to work on to develop economically.
Thank you very much. Mandy.
Yeah, again, I'll echo that. I was here for that as well. And listening to what they had to say about transportation needs. And it goes to show with the bigger companies that come in like Amazon and things of that nature, it's going to be extremely difficult without that access for transportation and goods. If they can't get the goods here at the right price and they can't get their crew here at the right price, what makes it, you know, what makes it right for them to come to Chubak and to build their businesses here? And that's where we do have to look at generalized infrastructure and things that we were talking about with small business buildup. And he was talking about TIF tax. That's another one that we can really look at in those districts. But, you know, thinking of I N L as well as a resource, like I said before, and keeping the money that's grown here stays here. And if we build on one another and we feed into smaller businesses, they're the ones that are spending their money here and they're the ones buying goods that are already here. And so that's one thing I think we really need to support is our small business.
Thank you. Kevin.
Let me address a little bit the infrastructure thing. That's a huge thing, infrastructure in the city. And, you know, the interesting thing is a lot of our infrastructure is something that each one of us can see. And so when we see that it's not what it ought to be, we can make a comment about it. But I found out as I was elected mayor, a lot of our infrastructure is in the ground and nobody sees it. And as a matter of fact, my Public Works Director at times said, if you were aware of what that was, you probably would sleep at night, Mayor. And that, we have come up with a GIS system that we have been able to identify all of those infrastructure needs that are underground and where they are, what their age is, what they're going to need in the future. And that's a great thing. So infrastructure is huge for economic development. Now, economic development does seem to be a team effort. I don't know how we ever get anybody to do that for a living because economic development is a hard game to play. If you happen to have success, nobody wants to hear about it ever again. That's yesterday's news. They want to know what you're doing today, what's coming next. We do work with Pocatello, Bannock County, in a beautiful way, it's Portnitz Valley Development. As we meet together, there's things that we can do to collaborate. At one point, it was wild though. They tried to do this more regionally and we tried to work with Viable Falls and Blackfoot. And what we found out is that we are two different regions for a purpose. We're different. And trying to develop us at the same time is really difficult. But just let me say this about incentives. Our incentive comes to Chubak if we have a great community and if you have a good business, we'll support you. I don't believe in giving incentives. I've had business people who have been here for decades who say, what incentive are you going to give to me if you're going to incentivize somebody to come and compete against me? who say, what incentive are you going to give to me if you're going to incentivize somebody to come and compete against me?
Thank you. The next question has to do with environmental protection. What measures will you take to protect and improve Chubak's air quality and water and support community energy goals? Let's start with Norman.
Well, you have to look at a lot of the regulations that are now in place. Make sure that as you propose new development and so forth, that you are compliant with those. Depending upon the development and the application, different aspects of DEQ or other environmental agencies will be implicated, and you have to look and make sure that you are compliant with those. We just need to make sure that we look at those for every development, those that are implicated, that they're complied with, and then encourage development.
Thank you. Manny?
Yeah, thank you. So looking at the environment overall, as we know, we have an amazing resource in our local rivers and our waterways that surround Pocatello, Chubak, and all the way out around Blackfoot that we access, I access actually, day, almost daily, try to anyways. So with that, I think it's important that we look into the solutions of what's right here and look into what we can do to control how the dumping is happening in our local waterways. As far as air quality goes, wow, I don't know. City Council's a hard one on that one. We know who one of our biggest producers of air quality issues are locally, and unfortunately, it's, it's going to be a hard one to take care of here at this level, so.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes, air quality is an interesting thing, because I think we have really good air quality here. When I was a contractor, I just worked on a building that was at a busy, busy intersection. And when we had some people, some people saw, they shut the job down because of the levels that were in the building. Well, they, they took about a month and a half to clean everything the best they could. And we came back, and about two months later, they were there to shut us down again. And when they checked it out, they found out that the exhaust was coming in from that, that busy intersection was what was causing those levels to go so high, that the building really wasn't in any bad shape. I think we have good air quality around here. There's a lot of people that are concerned about our businesses out to our west, but I've been out there and talked to them, and they, most of what you see from those stacks is moisture. They, they did at one point, put some pollution in there. They have worked on that, and it's, it's just not happening now. The water quality, we work really hard at that. We have people here at the city who know what they're doing. They test that water on a regular basis. They make sure the water that's delivered to your home is clean, pure, and usable. Our drinkable water is great here. We need to remember, we live on the edge of the desert. We live in the desert. Water is a precious commodity. Sometimes we forget that and we overuse it. We have an aquifer that we need to be aware of and take care of. That's where we get our water. That aquifer is very important. We've been participating in recharge of that aquifer and making sure we're protecting it. But I believe that as a city, we're doing what we can to make sure those two things are in place.
Thank you. Rodney?
Yeah, complicated question. For clarity, EPA is a federal agency that dictates many things to state and locals. It's a program that probably doesn't apply everywhere in our entire nation. Nonetheless, we do our best to deal with it. But the interesting thing happened, I believe it started about three years ago, that EPA has transferred some of that regulatory authority to the states, to Idaho Department of Water Resources and to the Division of Environmental Quality. The city of Chubak has historically and continues to do a good job of coordinating with those two agencies on air quality, on water quality. And I concur with, with Mayor England. Our water operators are certified. For clarity, our water comes from the aquifer, not from surface, so it's a little easier for us to treat and make sure we're delivering quality water. But I guess my summary statement would be that as that EPA regulation transfers closer to home and we have more input, we're prepared, ready, and willing to deal with those regulations.
Thank you very much. The next question is concerning sustainable growth and planning. How will you balance Chubak's growth with concerns about traffic congestion, urban sprawl, while ensuring sustainable development? And Manny, let's start with you.
Thank you. I, I do know that Chubak has a comprehensive plan, the 2040, 2045 comprehensive plan. Reviewing that, it does look like, you know, there is plans that have been initiated within that to work on sustainable growth. Smart growth is obviously going to be the best way that we can grow so that we don't overload the resources that we currently have at hand. It's been mentioned, grants might be hard to get in. And without an increase in revenue into the city, there's not going to be a lot of ways to change or to speed up any sort of infrastructure enhancements. And that's going to have to be something that is paced out over time. And with that plan laid out and applying that into a budgetary aspect, I think we'll really be able to see a clear picture of how that can become sustainable over time. That will have, have to happen over the next few years. Unfortunately, there's not an answer today about the, what the best way to do that. I do see a projection of some really great growth over the next 20 or so years, so.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
We did some really good studies about that several years ago, and then an unforeseen thing happened called COVID. And there was a couple of years after COVID was taken care of, that the discussion level was, well, when do these things come back? And that's really changed. I've found over the years as we've worked with that, a lot of these things died. They literally did. They went away. And so we've gone back in and started re-talking to people who were planning to do things at that point in time to see if we can get that interest to go again. I'm a big property rights guy, and growth in the city a lot of times has to do with who owns the property. And we have, we need to be careful about telling them what they can and can't do. We have limitations there. We have ordinances, and obviously, you can't just come in and do anything you want. But we need to make sure that we have a community that is inviting to those folks to come and say, yes, I want to develop here. One of the things that I'm working really hard on right now is private-public partnerships. We've never tried them here. They've been tried in Boise area. We've actually hired an attorney, and we're talking to several organizations. They're big organizations that actually have good money to invest in the community. It's getting very exciting. If we can get them to come here, there's amenities that we would like to have, but there's just no way that as taxpayers, we can foot that bill. It just can't happen. But if we can find a way to get these folks to come and invest in our community, that's what's going to cause that to happen. I think it's going to happen. I, I have not been more positive about what we can do than I am right now. But it does need to be a planned growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Rodney?
Great question, and it seems like three different topics, but I'm going to convey to you, I think they all tie very closely together. When we talk about urban sprawl, I would share with you that 30% of the city of Chubak inside our city limits now is vacant land on already improved streets and infrastructure. That infill development can occur very easily without an increased demand on our infrastructure. That requires us to have ordinances in place that incentivize that infill, that makes that process a little bit easier than developing on the periphery of our community. Associated with that, the more dense, we're southeast Idaho. We all like our big lawns, and I'm guilty of that myself. But the more dense our community can become, inherently, we're less reliant upon roadways for transportation. I'm an advocate of a walkable, bikeable community. I, when I worked here at the city of Chubak, I actually walked or biked to work every day for 18 months. It's doable. Granted, it wasn't six miles. It was a half a mile or less, but the point is that it's doable. And then the other piece for smart growth, we just need to be cautious that we don't outgrow our infrastructure. And when I say infrastructure, that's not just water and sewer and streets. That's our ability to provide law enforcement and EMS services to those properties also. We have impact fees in place that are helping facilitate a better financial situation for those departments, fully supportive of impact fees and what they're doing for our community.
Thank you. Norman?
Well, as was noted, we do have a comprehensive plan. We just adopted one for 2025 that will carry us forward for the next 20 years. I too am a big advocate of a walkable, bikeable community. That's part of what attracts people to Chubak, is our amenities, our aesthetics, as I call them. I, I can go to my home, and if, if the weather permits, I can get on my bike for some exercise. And within five minutes, I can be out on a country road enjoying a really pleasant bike ride. If I get a little tired, I can usually encounter a mean dog or two that will bump my adrenaline right where it needs to be, and then I'm good for the rest of the trip. But that's what I like about this community. We have a wonderful community. I think planning is, is done well. People look at ordinances very carefully. Every time we have some kind of redevelopment come before the council, the city staff gives us a presentation where they have looked very, very, with a fine-tooth comb, at all the different ordinances that apply to make sure that we are compliant with those, because that's a very important part. It all fits into the comprehensive plan, and that helps us to have managed growth. We want people to come here, but we've got to preserve the qualities of our community that attract them here in the first place.
Our next question asks you of possible drinking and work early. Do residents often feel overwhelmed by taxes, utilities, housing costs, and grocery prices? What would be your plan to make living in Chubak more affordable? Let's start with Kevin.
That's a, that's an excellent question, and it's one of those, I think we deal with that all the time, and there's, there's that. We've got to realize there's different levels of our society. We have people who have, they live well, and they don't, matter of fact, I've had to talk to them. They're willing to pay whatever they need to pay to be in our community. We also have people that I have talked to who said, you know, I, I hear this concept, well, it's just $10. $10 a month, how it's going to cost you. And they said, I don't have $10 a month. If that goes up $10 a month, I'm going to have to find somebody. I probably have to call one of my kids and say, I'm going to need you to give me that. So we need to be very cognizant of that. That's something that I have worked with all the time that I've been a mayor. I've had the opportunity to assist some individuals and work them through their budgets so that they can get on a process that fulfills the things that they need to do. There also are several things that are done at the state level that can help people who have that kind of need. And I've made them aware of that. The challenge with that is every one of those programs are renewable every year. So you get on it, all of a sudden, it works for them for 12 months, and then all of a sudden, it's not working. And if they don't reply, they can't get it. We talked about at one point trying to do something like a circuit breaker here at the local level. That's very difficult to do, really difficult to do. And so it hasn't happened, but we do need to be cognizant and aware that there are those who have great challenges. And what can we do to help them? There are several things we can do to help them. The most important thing is to ask them to make sure, ask the community to come together and have these discussions. There are organizations that are set to help almost anybody who truly needs the help.
Thank you. Rodney?
Thank you for the question. Boy, we've just all gone through the same inflation in every aspect of our lives, and I'm not sure that a sitting mayor or council has all of those solutions. But I can tell you this, we have a responsibility as the city to provide core services. And along with that, you'll hear me say this, I've said it in the past, I'll say it tonight, and I'll say it if I'm elected in the future, we need to make sure that every dollar that is spent produces some benefit to our community. It's called outcome-based budgeting or results-based budgeting, to make sure that the money that we're spending on your behalf produces the results that you expect. I also had the opportunity, affordable housing piece, I met with the Building Contractors Association last week to see what their concerns were. There's a number of builders, developers that are leaving Chubak to our surrounding communities. Five years ago, that was the opposite. They were leaving other communities to come to Chubak. And so I wanted to know what that concern was, and they expressed kindly but strongly that we need to pay attention to our fee structure, but more importantly, to our processes of approvals. One expressed that they had been eight and a half months trying to get a little small project approved, even to come to council for the first decision. And those months are expensive in the development and building world. And so we need to make sure that we have efficient processes in place to allow builders and developers to produce affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Thanks. Norman?
Well, as Rodney was saying, we provide core services. As a local government, this isn't partisan. This is a, this is a local government that is here to provide essential services to our citizens. We have to take care, as I said before, with our first responders, because we have to give our citizens adequate police and fire protection. We have to protect those first responders as well. We have to keep the roads, streets, and highways maintained. And those, those things cost money. And whenever we come, whenever we have those things come before us, we are very cognizant of people that are on limited fixed incomes. I know that it's, I know that my fellow council members do not find these decisions to be easy, because we're always thinking about, well, you know, for some people, an extra $10 a month is going to really hurt. Some can't even do that. I also think that's why whenever, every year, we have folks like SICA, Meals on Wheels, A for Friends come to us asking for donations to their organizations, we wholeheartedly approve those. And so that's some of the things that I think we can do to help the people in our community.
Thank you. Manny?
Yeah, so affordable housing is one of the biggest topics that we have going right now. As we know, everything's been growing in price. Our commodities are going up, which in turn leads to a higher cost of building. It leads into a higher cost of your gas prices, grocery prices. Everything that we do is going to be more expensive. I think right now leaning on our partnerships would be the most important thing to do as far as immediate assistance. I'm going to use an example. So working with the United Way, I've, I've learned that approximately 30% of our low-income employed folks have had to quit one or two of their positions just to be able to afford taking care of their children. That was alarming to me. It kind of breaks my heart, honestly, to know that somebody has to quit working and quit putting that money into the economy just to be able to afford to pay rent, because otherwise, they would not be able to afford their childcare. So when people are having to make these ultimate decisions of, do I take care of my kids? Where do I send them? What do I do with them? Do I quit my job? That should be something that's on the forefront of our mind and something that we pay very much attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is about parks and city beautification. What steps will you take to maintain and beautify city parks and areas throughout Chubak that some residents feel are lacking in upkeep? Rodney?
Well, that's a great question, and it's close to home for me. You know, Chubak for decades has been considered a community of outdoor spaces, of parks. It's been important. We've had ordinances in place for numbers of years that address the need for open space and great parks amenities for our residents. But we've also had a lot of concerns about how are we taking care of those parks? Certainly, every one of those that we build comes with the obligation to maintain it. I personally feel it comes down just to commitment. If they're important to us, we'll solve a way to do that. And I'm going to use an example, and it's not intended to be derogatory, but this facility that you see here, great facility, great grounds around it, is maintained by third-party contractors. It's beautiful, and it should be. And I'm, I honestly don't understand why we don't have that same level of expertise or expectation for the properties that are in each one of our neighborhoods. I'm an advocate for our park system, and we need to figure out a way to better take care of those. Quickly, we, we have collected nearly a million and a half dollars in park impact fees that we can put into park improvements and expansions in our community. If we'll just commit to do so, we have the money and resources available to continue to expand those benefits.
Thank you. Norman?
Well, parks and recreation is an important part of our budget item. We look at it every year, and we need to keep our parks maintained, because that is part of what makes our community a wonderful place to live, and it's also what's going to attract businesses and other residents to help us grow to where we need to be. I wholeheartedly endorse the idea of having parks, and I also like the idea of neighborhoods that adopt a park to help with that as part of being this community. It's a community spirit. I think we need to do more of those things. But yes, we do take a hard look at parks and recreation every year. And, and I think right now with the limited funds that we have, the focus has been on spending funds to... now with the limited funds that we have, the focus has been on spending funds to make sure that our parks are safe. We need to make sure that the facilities that our children use are safe. We need to make sure that there's a safe ground covering to protect against injuries from when they're using it. So I think that's what the focus of our budgetary concerns has been with the parks and recreation. But we do need to maintain what we have, because it'd be a terrible waste to have gone to all that expense to have a park and then let it go.
Thank you. Mandy?
Yep. So parks and rec is also something very near and dear. My father worked over 40 years for the city of Pocatello. He retired with a key to the city. I was a city kid. I was a parks kid. That's where I grew up. I grew up making this entire community my playground, and if it wasn't for, you know, knowing that the people in this city were taking care of our parks, I would never have had the access to that. I would never have those core memories of the time I spent out there in these parks and having a good time. I want my kids to have that. I want that to continue, and that also needs to be one of our priorities in our beautification and making sure that we have the access there for all of our residents. We have a great park, Brooklyn's Playground, right down the road, that has a lot of accessibility. That's the one. So if we could look into other parks, making that accessible for all of our residents, I think that would be a really good use of our funds, and looking at our budget and where every single line item goes would be extremely important in this.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes, parks always have been important to this community, and at one point in time, we actually had a policy that every time there was a subdivision, we would have a portion that was dedicated to parks. We recognized that as time went by, what were happening was, well, our pocket parks really weren't parks, and they were difficult for us to maintain. And so we've had discussions for several years with the council, and so what do we do with those? And we've talked about selling some of those off and putting our emphasis on making sure and taking care of parks that would be destination parks. Over the last few years, we have put a lot more emphasis on that. And I'll say something that as the mayor, I can say this, because I'm the guy that gets these. This year, to date, knock on wood, I have not received any complaints about weeds or streets. And we have really made an effort to work on both of those. We bought new equipment for our parks folks so that they could put on more spray to knock the weeds down in the front end. Weeds are a real challenge. They just, and it's something that the dollar is what, that's what pushes us. It takes money and it takes manpower to take care of these things. And so one of the decisions we've made is to quit doing new parks until we learn how to take care of the ones that we have. I brought up the idea of this private-public partnership. That's one way that we may get a really good park in this community that we will not have to maintain, and that's the kinds of things that I'm looking at doing. But yes, those are things that are a real benefit to our community, and we need to maintain them in the best of the plan.
Thank you. The next question is about cooperability and pedestrian safety. What are your vision on urban cooperability and pedestrian and bicycle safety in Chubak? Let's start with Norman.
Well, as you look at our newest developments here, we are doing those things. We are making them very accessible, very walkable, and we also have great bicycle paths here in the city. I would like to see that continue. I think that is compatible with the comprehensive plan that we have adopted this year, and that will take us forward for the next 20 years. And I will continue to support those things, because that is a very important aspect of our community. As you make it more accessible for bicycles and for pedestrians, you cut down on traffic. And cut down on traffic, you make our streets a little more safer, I think.
Thank you. Mandy?
Thank you. So bikability, accessibility, I just touched on that slightly, but we also need to look at our major corridors that cause a lot of danger, especially for our youth to be crossing the street. I have two teenagers, one of them works in the community, and it scares me when she walks over to work, crossing over Yellowstone. Not everybody pays attention, as we know, it's not exactly pedestrian-friendly. So that's always, you know, every path that they take is on the forefront of my mind, is what can we do to enhance the safety of our pedestrians and our bicyclists? Yes, we are developing more bikable paths, and I think a famous movie said, if you build it, they will come. So, yes, if we build it, there will be people there to utilize those resources. I know I personally would utilize the resources. I also have a path that I've, not even 30 seconds from the front of my house, takes me all the way out to the country roads. We use that all the time. We go on walks with the dogs, on the bike, whatever we need to do. It's really fun, it's really exciting, but getting off of that path and having to cross, and the folks that might be in different locations around the city that really want to access those resources, we want to make sure they get there safely. Because again, not everybody's driving there, and we need to take into, you know, consideration their transportation needs.
Thank you. Kevin?
That's an interesting question, really. I've been asking for probably a year and a half now, so I had the opportunity to talk to groups of people in our community, if we are bikeable and walkable. And the answer I'm getting almost all the time is yes. I'm a walker. I walk a lot. Our community is walkable. There's no doubt about it. Now, you get to the main corridors, you don't feel safe. One of the things that I've said to people a lot is, even though you don't feel safe, we don't have a lot of pedestrians getting hit. And guess what? Yellowstone is a highway. It's a state highway. And we're working with the state on that very thing, so we need to make that more so that it feels safe, not just is safe. And I think we're going to be able to get there. If you'll notice on the other quarters, the city of Chubak does own, we've put in more crosswalks with the beacons to make sure that they can be safe for people. But again, I walk a lot, and I love to talk about the bike little part. That becomes a big challenge. I've become aware recently, guess what happens when we travel on roads? Guess what happens on the bike path? It gets filled with gravel. Gravel isn't good for a bike. Bikes have small tires. And so I guess what I'm saying is, if we're really going to invest in having all of these bike paths, we're going to have to invest in some manpower and some equipment to make sure that we clear that off. We certainly don't want bikes to be tipping over because they've got gravel there. So there are challenges with that, but I believe at this point in time, our youth drive their bikes all over the place. I'm not a biker, so I don't, but I walk all over this community, and we are a walkable community. But again, if we're going to be truly walkable and bikeable, have all these bike paths, there's going to be a commitment to some manpower and some equipment.
Thank you. Rodney?
Again, I've touched on, and it's near and dear to my heart, walkable and bikable. I think the key is connectivity. I can go walk around my neighborhood, or I could go bike around my neighborhood, but can I bike to my neighbor's neighborhood? When you talk about walkability and bikability, it's being able to use that as a mode of transportation in your daily life. And so I think connectivity is the key. I would share with you the success of what I think is New Day Parkway. When we built that, while I was here as Public Works Director, we built intentionally that separated walkable-bikable path that now connects clear to the Wellness Center and back down Chubak Road. It just takes those commitments and that vision to put those things into place. When we adopted the Parks Master Plan, it includes a component that is a canal-trail system. And nobody thought that was possible until we actually went and visited with Fort Hall, and they agreed to let the city use the canal and irrigation systems in the city of Chubak for routes for walkable and bikable access. No one ever thought that would happen, but we were able to obtain that. The city has received a grant that is going to connect that first piece of the canal from Philbin Road to Hawthorne Road, basically a connection to Stewart Park from the Brookstone Subdivision. Last thing I would say is, the Porton of Greenway Foundation does a tremendous job in our community. We have not been a great partner to them in the past. I think we should strive to become their partner and extend those canals, excuse me, those trail systems that they build north into the city of Chubak.
Thank you very much. This is the final question, and it is about immigration enforcement and community safety. Should local police be used with federal agents to enforce immigration laws, and how would you balance, sorry, how would you balance enforcement with ensuring that all community members feel safe? And we're starting with Mandy.
Thank you. So I do think that every ICE enforcement should work in conjunction with not only local law enforcement, but with our county and state level as well, and everybody should be on the same page. That's what it's going to take, is everybody working together. It's really important for all of our citizens to feel safe in their community. So when I say safety for all, I mean everybody, and that is something that we need to make very, very important for us. And it seems as though a lot of things have been rushed, and we really need to slow down with this. And pushing too hard and too aggressively is only going to turn out negatively. There's nothing that you can do in life where you just go full throttle, and it turns out really well every single time. There's just nothing you can do. So, yes, we do need to work in conjunction with local law enforcement, like I said, county and state. We also need to work with our EMS professionals in this and make sure everybody is, you know, around for this. If they are going to do any sort of enforcement, that needs to be open and transparent.
Sorry, Mr. Kevin?
You know, we live in a country of laws, and we need to recognize that. The federal law trumps local law, and we need to be very careful about what we think we can tell the feds to do. We're very fortunate, we have fantastic law enforcement officers in our community. They have communication with those folks, and they have those kinds of communications that if something's to happen in this city, let us be involved, let us be part of that process. Why should they be? These are people that know our community well. They're the people that can bring calmness to any situation that might happen. And so the important thing for us to remember is, we certainly can't force the hand of the federal government. If we do, we're going to admit a fight that we'll lose. But we certainly can't coordinate with the federal government, and not just federal, state, and Van Campy. And that happens, that happens. We have a law enforcement group that's just second to none as far as I'm concerned. They know what those challenges are, and they're ready to take them on. And so it's not something that I do sleep over, because I believe that if that ever has to happen in our community, there will be coordination, and we'll have professionals handling that that will make sure that it's done right and that people are treated as individual and treated with respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to answer this question by concurring with both Mandy and Mayor England. Certainly, local, regional, state, federal coordination needs to occur, and I echo what Kevin has said about our local jurisdictions. You know, Chief Sasser, that's his role in our community, is to make sure that those type of interactions happen the way that they should safely for our citizens, for our residents. I have full confidence in he and his staff. I would admit, it would be outside of my area of expertise, and I would have to default to their expertise, and I would be a resource to them as needed if they needed support at the state or federal level. But again, I want to echo support for Chief Sasser, his staff, as Kevin has said, and have confidence in their ability to help guide us through those decisions.
Thank you. And Norman?
Well, as Mayor England said, this is a federal matter. The Supremacy Clause of the U.S. Constitution says so. And if we resist them, we're going to be on the losing end of a court battle. Now, it's a practical matter, as has been said, we do need to make sure that our federal, state, and local law enforcement are able to coordinate and that we don't hinder those efforts. Transparency, though, has its limits. We can't do things to hinder any kind of an investigation or any kind of a enforcement action. And for the life of me, I look at some of these news stories on the national news, for the life of me, I can't understand why anyone would take any action to tip people off and put our law enforcement people's lives at risk. That's just mind-boggling to me. And so we have to support our local and state, federal law enforcement as they carry out their duties under the law.
Thank you. We're going to go to our two-minute closing remarks. I just want to say thank you for everybody up here. You know, get all these questions thrown at you, and really impressed with all the answers, and thank you for everybody who's attended. I really appreciate that. But you have two minutes to give your closing remarks, and you're going to start with Kevin.
Well, thank you so much. Again, I want to say thank you to those who have put this forum on and have been an enjoyable experience. So thank you for the two of you who have come. You can see there aren't a lot of people here. You have the responsibility now. Go out and talk to your friends and neighbors, talk to them about the good things that you see happening here. I want to say thank you to each of these people who put their name on the ballot. I've done that seven times now. That's not easy. As a matter of fact, I have said in the past, and I mean this, campaigns and the way they run are actually the definition of cruel and unusual punishment. And if you haven't signed up for it, you've advanced the Constitution to do it. But we signed up, so here we are. Listen, I love this community with all my heart. The greatest honor in my life has been to have the opportunity to serve this community. I love it. I truly do. I believe that I have over here. But you know what? There's a lot of good ideas out there, and I'm a listener. I always have been. And I listen to people, and they come in, and they have good ideas, and I try to make sure that we can install those ideas where they happen. But I just want you to know that I, again, I've run many campaigns. I just say thank you to this group for the campaign I see happening in our community. Positive things are being talked about. I have yet to run against anybody or even seen anybody run for public office that wants to come in and destroy our community. And sometimes people talk about others like that's what they're doing, and they don't. They have the best in the community, and they might have a different way of doing it. They might have a different way of saying it, but they don't want to destroy their community. I'm grateful for that. We live in a society that hinges upon the people getting involved with government, a government for, by, and of the people. And I'm just so grateful to be part of that, and again, say thank you to each one of you for your participation. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Rodney?
Well, as my closing statement, I want to start by saying I have not run seven campaigns. I've run one. This is it. And I'm asking to be your next mayor in the context of it's time for change. I think there's new direction, new vision for our community to make sure it can reach its highest potential. I realize that that change can be uncomfortable. We sometimes get satisfied with the status quo, both as individual and as organizations. And it's no small thing, but I am asking for you to consider that that change is important. Our willingness to not change is actually a bigger risk than status quo. I invite you to learn more about our platforms, our candidacy. We have a website, we're trying to be active on social media, we have an open house tomorrow night over at The Hive at 7:00. Come and participate in. Come and learn. We're open to answer your questions, to share our vision. And ultimately, I would ask you, if the things that you've heard from me tonight, that you hear from us in our campaign resonate with you, I ask for your support on November 4th in helping move Chubak to its highest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Norman?
After I completed law school and pro-vol, my wife and I knew that we wanted to raise our family in this community. Both sets of grandparents would be here, and I realized that not everybody has that opportunity, but we had, and we took it. And so we moved out to, my wife joined, I moved out to Joy Street here in Chubak, and she tells me that she did that so that I could remember my way home. But we've lived at the same house since 1990, and in those 35 years, we have found this to be a wonderful community. I am so grateful that we were able to raise our three children here. I am grateful to their schoolteachers, I am grateful to their scout leaders, I'm grateful to their religious leaders, and anybody who had a part in raising them in Chubak, Idaho. And now our four grandchildren live less than a mile away from us, and they too now are experiencing what it means to grow up in Chubak, Idaho. And I am so thankful for that opportunity. That's why I want to serve. Now, at this time in my life, I want to continue to work and serve on the city council. I've grown to love the job, the people that I work with. They are people of vision, they have the interests of the community at heart. I want to now give back and make sure that future generations, including my grandchildren and those who will follow, have the same kind of experience that my children have, that my grandchildren are having, being raised in this wonderful community. We have our challenges, but we have learned, I think, to work together to meet those challenges and to make this community that it is. And I would appreciate your support and hope that I can have an opportunity to continue working with the city council and promoting the interests of our community. Thank you.
In closing, I just wanted to say that Chubak is my home, and it's where my heart is. I'm running for Chubak City Council because I believe in the power of neighbors, helping neighbors, and I wanna make sure that our city continues to grow in a way that still feels like home, which is safe, welcoming, and connected. Our future depends on how well we take care of each other today. And I'll add to that, supporting strong schools, safe neighborhoods, and communities where families can thrive isn't just about policy, but it's about the people. It's about our kids, our parents', our parents', our small businesses, and every other resident that calls Chubak home. This means being responsible with how we spend. I've mentioned it before about my budgetary experience with that. By making thoughtful choices and putting taxpayers and residents first, it means listening, and I mean really listening, to the people that we serve. It's being accessible, it's open and honest about the challenges that we face, and keeping the promises that we make. I believe that leadership isn't about titles, it's about service. It's about showing up, working hard, and doing what's right, even if nobody's watching. That's the kind of leadership that I bring to this role. Thank you, everybody, for spending your time with us. I know how important that is, and I appreciate everybody for being here. League of Women Voters, Idaho State Journal, for putting this on, and all the work that you do during our elections. I really appreciate that. It's not an easy, easy task to take on, so, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our forum this evening. Many thanks to our candidates and our audience this evening for being here. And this forum was recorded and will be available for viewing in the next few days on the League of Women Voters Pocatello website and also on YouTube. We want to remind you that your voice matters. Make a plan and vote on a better board. Thank you again to everyone for participating.